Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council of the City of Hartford. Prior to this meeting, all proper notices were sent. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call. Laurie?
The mayor and all older persons are present except older person Churchy, who is absent and excused.
Thank you very much. We have before us unanimous consent agenda, President Hagie and older person Kohler.
Motion by older person Hagie, seconded by older person Kohler approving the following two items on the unanimous consent agenda, the Common Council minutes of October 11th, 2022, and number two, suspension of the downtown parking regulations for the upcoming holidays, Friday, November 11th, 2022 through Saturday, January 1st, 2023.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. Communications, Laurie?
I have two things this evening. The first is reminding everybody of the November 8th election. District one is at the rec center, district two is here is at city hall, and district three is at the library. Early voting has started today. That's from 7:45 to 4:15 this week and next week.
And that occurs where?
In the clerk's office, second floor of city hall.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. Okay, that's the November 8th election. And a reminder, at this time, we're doing a little unusual timing. We're going to start with appearances and citizen comments. Anybody wishing to make a comment, any citizen willing to come on up, just state your name and address. You have three glorious minutes at the podium. Any appearances? Third call. Okay, with that, we go to altermanic requests. President Ko...
I did forget my second thing. Just to remind everybody, the November 8th Common Council meeting has been moved to November 15th due to the fall election.
Right. Because of the fall elections, we do have, we move the date, just so everybody's aware. So instead of seeing our smiling faces on the 8th, you'll see them on the 15th and then a week later. So we go back to back on Tuesdays in November. Thank you very much. President Hagie?
I'm just going to reiterate what Laurie said about the election coming. It's a pretty important election. I just want to encourage everybody, get out and vote. This is a pretty widespread and maybe raucous election. So it's very important. That's it.
Thank you. Older person Rosniak.
Just a kind of a personal thank you to John Griffin. We had some angry people over the weekend, and John has come to a resolution with it. So, John, thank you. Appreciate it.
Older person Carroll.
Nothing, I mean.
Older person Garza.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Older person Kohler.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Older person Sikora.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Older person Phillip.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Older person Webb.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. You know, we're maybe talking about Centennial Park tonight, and the bids for that came in over what we expected. And so the hope is that we can continue to build all the things that we want to in Centennial Park and hopefully raise some money from the community to get the amenities that we want there. So I think there'll be more information about that coming. But having nice parks is a privilege in the city, and stay tuned for more info on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see. No standing committee reports, so we will, no resolutions. We'll go right to ordinances. This is first reading and possible action, ordinance 1464, creating section 4.035 of the municipal code regarding appointment of alternate members to boards and commissions. There is an executive summary attached. I believe this is being taken by our city administrator, Steve Okert.
So on occasion, we have a couple of committees and commissions that basically are not able to meet if you don't have a quorum. And a lot of times, those commissions, committees really need to be moving on projects that we have. And so we're proposing the idea of adding alternates to the planning commission tonight. The planning commission would have one alternate member of the council to substitute in the event that one of the two elected officials are not able to attend. And then we have five members that are residents, and we'd have an alternate for that also. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Okay, this is just the first reading, so if you would like to move forward with this, we can do that if you'd suspend.
I'd move to suspend.
Motion to suspend by President Hagie. Do we have a second? By older person Carroll.
Motion by older person Hagie, seconded by older person Carroll to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance 1464.
Any further discussion? For suspension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Okay, for consideration, we have older person Sikora, seconded by older person Carroll.
Motion by older person Sikora, seconded by older person Carroll for the adoption of proposed ordinance 1464.
Any discussion? Yes, older person, or excuse me. President Hagie?
Just a comment. I've been at a couple of meetings where people didn't, there wasn't enough people to actually carry on the meeting. So I think this is rather an important thing to do, to make sure we can continue doing our business. So there was, I don't see anything controversial with it that we would have wanted it to be a first reading that we'd go ahead and with that.
Correct. Yeah, I don't think.
It just makes sense. Let's put it that way.
There's no surprise that it's going to be, I'm pretty sure, unanimous vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have the mayor's report. This is discussion and consideration of appointing the two alternate members to the planned commission effective upon passage and publication of ordinance number 1464, which just did pass. Alter, alternate, altermanic representative Kyle Sikora and alternate citizen representative Bob Jewell. Would look for a motion to move forward with that. Older person Phillip, seconded by older person Carroll. You are Mr. Second today.
Whatever works.
Turned into being third.
Motion by older person Phillip, seconded by older person Carroll, appointing altermanic representative Kyle Sikora and alternate citizen representative Bob Jewell to the planned commission.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. During the mayor's report, I just did want to mention real quick that the city administrator, Steve Okert, and I had the pleasure of going to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Convention, saw a bunch of interesting things. There's one that I will look to move forward with in November, something that I think is important for our emergency crews, and I will have more on that when it is an agenda item. City administrators' report. Steve?
First item is discussion and consideration of approving the quitclaim deed between the City of Hartford and the State of Wisconsin. And this has to do with property that we have easement to in the town of Aaron.
Correct.
And it is, the, it's actually through the local utility. And here to talk more about that is our utility director.
So we have two easements that were discovered in the town of Aaron. There's two easements that were discovered in the town of Aaron when the state was going to purchase right away. We used to serve power in the town of Aaron a long time ago. These easements were created back in the 30s. We no longer have a need for them. We have our, our service territory has changed, and so has our boundary agreement with We Energies. So there's no need for these easements, and the recommendation is to relinquish these easements back to the state.
Any questions? Yes, older person Hagie?
Reading this, this, these deed restrictions, they are all the way from Hartford out into I-167.
I asked, I talked to the state this morning, and they didn't know. I think there's a lot of easements that are Hartford Electric easements in the town of Aaron. I don't know if they're all connected, but when I asked the question this morning, they weren't sure.
I'm just surprised I would have extended that far.
Any other questions? If not, Mayor? Thank you. Would look for a motion to move forward or not. Older person Rosniak, seconded by older person Garza.
Motion by older person Rosniak, seconded by older person Garza, approving quitclaim deed between the City of Hartford and the State of Wisconsin.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. Steve?
Second item is discussion and consideration of authorizing appropriate city officials to negotiate the final scope and execute contract documents for the Centennial Park Pavilion and related projects, elements of a cost not to exceed $1.6 million with Wondra Construction Incorporated of Iron Ridge. And joining us tonight is our park and rec director, Randy Watatchek.
Hi, Randy.
Good evening.
Good evening. Per your executive summary, again, Wondra was the most reasonable bid that we did receive. We are in negotiations with them to make sure we're within this limit. We're also continuing our efforts of recruiting donations, having those conversations to help the process along in funding the park project.
Just to follow up to that, again, when we started this project probably two to three years ago, and looked at what we wanted to do, and then Mike went out and collected donations from a lot of very generous organizations, the Lions, the Rotary, Forte Bank, and likewise. At that point in time, we had no idea what was about to hit as far as inflation goes, and the increase in costs and availability of a lot of the items that we're looking to do. So this project obviously has escalated greatly, but again, as Randy said, they will, we will continue to look at sponsorships on a couple other items to help reduce some of the costs. And also, we're working, at least Randy and, and John are working very closely with Wondra Construction, which again had the low bid, low complete bid, and see what items we can pull out of there either for a phased approach and do at a future year, or parts of it in which we can do ourselves. So we hope to be able to do all the, in the entire project, the entire wish list items. It just simply may not be able to be done over the one project time period. It might take us another year or two to get all of it done so that, again, we can, we can afford it. Any questions? If not, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Would look for a motion to move this along at $1.6 million for Wondra Construction.
I'm sorry. I did have a question.
Oh, please. I'm sorry.
So.
Microphone. There. Thank you.
So how many bidders did we have? I only see two here. Is this just two of the ones that you considered, or how does this process work? This is a significant amount of money. So can you kind of take me through that again, please, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, we go out for open bid, and John wants to jump on this also since he sent the bid out. We go out for open bid, and again, I think there was about five or six different companies that pulled out the plans.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
John, just, can you say?
We had about seven.
Can you say your name and title too, just so our studio audience knows who's talking here?
John Griffin, city engineer.
Thank you.
Sorry. We had about six or seven plan holders and three bidders. One bidder submitted an incomplete bid. So they bid on the pavilion itself and one of the alternate items, and that was it. And the rest of the project, no sewer, no water, no anything, you know, for the project. So we dismissed their bid as incomplete. There are literally two of the 37 or so items were filled in on their bid.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is only two were complete bids, the ones that I'm seeing on this executive summary of all the five that submitted something.
Do you remember how many, how many requests you put out? Do you have?
It's not a, it's not like you sent it out.
Okay, it is a published. We publish it.
Right. And so anybody can pull it off of our internet.
Understood. Okay.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. Steve?
I'm sorry, can you repeat who had the motion?
I don't know. I don't think you did that.
Oh, I think it was.
You were about to do that.
Oh, was, oh, you're right. Wasn't it, wasn't it Ray and Joe Kohler? I thought it was.
We didn't have a first or second.
I don't think so.
I'll go first.
His hand before and he called you, so I'm not sure.
Tony and older person Webb.
And now would you like to have a vote?
Yes.
See what you did to me, Joe. Which Joe?
Exactly.
Getting them confused. Favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. Steve?
Third item is discussion and consideration of authorizing appropriate city officials to execute the contract documents for the Community Development Block Grant Capital Improvements Phase Two at Washington Heights and Hart Haven Senior Apartments. And joining us tonight is our city planner, Justin Drew.
So you voted to approve a number of expenditures at Hart Haven and Washington Heights earlier this year. The big one was an elevator remodel at Hart Haven. The problem with that is it's a senior living facility, three floors, and the elevator was going to be down for three months. We couldn't really figure out, the contractor couldn't figure out a good bypass for that until we got too late in the year. We have to finish expending these funds by the end of this year. So we ended up, we're going to be doing a chairlift in one of the stairwells. We've got one more stairwell than is required, so we're going to turn that basically into a chairlift. We will do the elevator in the future as a non-CDBG project, but in the interim, we wanted to make sure we used up all of the funds. So I asked my staff what else needs doing that we could get done by the end of the year. These are the projects that they came up with. We had two bidders, and we proposed to go with the low bidder, which is J. H. Hassinger, Inc. And the work is fronted by CDA funds, but will be reimbursed by CDBG funds.
Any questions? If not, Mayor? Thank you. Would look for a motion to approve in a second. President Hagie, seconded by older person Sikora.
Motion by older person Hagie, seconded by older person Sikora, authorizing appropriate city officials to execute contract documents for the CDBG Capital Improvements Phase Two at Washington Heights and Hart Haven Senior Apartments.
President Hagie?
We received an updated executive summary yesterday, and I think the only change is that the actual numbers were included in that as to what the different parts of the project were. Previously, just the projects were identified, but not the cost.
Yes, and not how we like to do things, but we had bidding open, you know, requirements for how long the bid stays open. When the first bid was opened, one of the bidders hadn't quite completed it, so we only had one bidder. By CDBG rules, we needed at least two. So we had to republish the whole thing, and it backed us up. And we just, in order to make sure we get it done by the end of the year, we needed to keep moving forward.
So that was just for everybody's information here?
Yeah.
If you saw that come through.
Any other questions? If not, Mayor? Thank you. Would look for a motion in a second.
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
We have a first and a second.
I'm sorry?
We have a first and a second.
Oh, that's right. Before I didn't have one, now I have too many. Swear there's a Brewers game on. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Okay. Steve?
Yes, just reviewing our third quarter financials for the year 2022. As of the end of September, we are currently at 80.88% for the total general fund revenues, which is in line with the previous six years. And meanwhile, our expenses after the third quarter are at 74.16%. Again, slightly on the high end of the range, but still within the range of the past six years. No doubt why that is, is of course, all of our increased costs, and gasoline being number one. So again, staff continues to review this. They, their charge is still to make sure that at the end of the year, they come in at or under budget and attempt everything they can to do so. And so they are made aware, the finance department will provide them the information to where they're, what line items they're over budget with, and will do everything they can to try to get under those items or, or, you know, as a, as a total department budget, get below that, that level. But again, no doubt about it, like most communities and most businesses, this increase in costs have definitely taken us by surprise. Any questions? Again, the reason I do this every quarter is just to, again, give you an update so you know if all of a sudden there was a red flag coming up, that we're, you know, 90% of expenditures already through the third quarter, you'd knew something was up. Same thing with revenues, if they were, you know, that far down. But again, historically, we have continued to always be right in that same range for both expenditures and revenues. Any questions? If not, and we'll move on to the budget. This one's a little more difficult to talk about because the fact is we don't have a number to report. I did, I did hand you tonight a, the most updated numbers that we have. Unfortunately, we still don't have our industrial numbers. This is not extremely rare that we come to you at this meeting and don't have all of our exact numbers. Again, we just went and had open book two weeks ago and board of review last week. And so the industrial numbers are based on the percent of, the percent of assessed value versus equalized value that we have for commercial and residential. So let me give you an example. In the past, last year, for instance, our residential and commercial was about 90% difference. So 90% of our equalized was what our assessed value was. Okay, so let me give you an example. Kyle lives in a house of 100,000 value. I hope to God it's more than that. It's $100,000 in value. However, we're only assessing it at 90,000, so we're 10% less. Equalized, 100,000, assessed value, 90,000. So that, again, gives us a 10% gap. That's why we had to go to revale this year. And again, you just got your letters, so I know you've, you know all about that. So now, our assessed value and our equalized value should be at 100%, both of them 100%. Okay? So the state does, the state is the one who assesses our industrial. They look at what percentage we're at, now 100, and they will then assess our industrial at 100%. So we anticipate our industrial to go up, and the numbers we're showing don't show that because we don't know exactly where they're coming in. We could have had industrial building that added on, so we don't know where it was coming. But once we get those, then we can give you the final, your tax rate for 2022, 23, or 23, I should say. Right now, what we're showing is, again, a tax rate, mill rate of $4.68. That's down from $5.99. Again, a 21.89% drop. However, again, that does not include the change in industrial, which, again, is going to drop it even more than that. So I'm guessing closer to about 444, 430, somewhere around that range. The Dodge County tax rate at this time, again, 471, down 12.68%, down from 5.4. So again, we don't know exact numbers, and this is one of those very rare years that I can't tell you what the, the mill rate is at this point in time. But the two things I will let you know, operationally, the city to get levy limit and state share revenue have to stay under the levy limit numbers. This budget does that. It stays under levy limit for, for operational costs. The only thing that changes, up or down or whatever, is, is going to be the other three, which is going to be your, your debt service fund, library fund, and transportation fund. As you see in the sheet that I deliver to you tonight, again, debt service fund went up 6.08. Again, it's the cost of what your debt is. Library fund went up only 2.21%, and transportation fund went down 42%. Again, it's a very minimal budget, so I don't want to overpower that number of what it really is. So again, at this point in time, we're looking at a 21.89% reduction in the mill rate. However, again, we do not know what the industrial will be. That will go up once we get the industrial numbers. We're hoping to get the industrial numbers yet this week. So I'm happy to go through any part of the budget you have questions on. I've got four of the department heads, four of the department heads here to answer any questions that you have. I did not receive any requests to have department heads here, but since they were here anyways for other items, they'll be glad to answer any questions. Older person Phillip?
Yeah, I just, on the, on the handout page, I just saw that 90K differential. Did you speak to that already or not with respect to this miscellaneous general fund going up? Is that increased expenses? And then my second question is, you maintain a budget that's pretty solid, but, you know, given our inflationary and increased costs, did you, what did you sacrifice to be able to meet that number?
Let me go, I'm not sure I heard both the questions, but let me try it again. The first question I believe you had, had to do with.
It's what you marked in red under miscellaneous general fund. You got a 90K swing.
Which page are you on?
I'm sorry, it's the handout that was given to me.
That I gave tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or it was in the.
That was a different one. All right, now you're going to have to give me.
It was just a one cheater.
Do you remember which one, which page that was, Joe?
It was the last page. You have, you have it indicated in red, and I thought you would speak to it. And it's the general fund that's going from 367 to 457. It's the largest swing of all the differences that you have in this planned budget summary.
Let me take a look at what's.
It's your miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous general fund.
The triple nine.
It's that slush fund that I've been always wondering about.
999.
We taxed you too much, but we're not giving it back, though. I just wanted to understand the explanation on that.
What he's talking about is.
Oh, yeah, okay.
24% increase.
Okay, so what you're looking at is, again, we have the revenues and expenses. So what you're looking at there is going to be the revenues section of the budget. Again, just to reiterate how the budget works, it's kind of like a Christmas tree. It, it's all the budgets, then it's the revenue and expenses, then it's the public notice and final budget proposal, and then the star on the tree, of course, is your, is your mill rate. So in that expense, you, you looked at that number, and the amount of money we're pulling out of our savings is that number. It is marked in red because that is a considerable amount. And I, I think it brings about a good conversation when it comes to our budget this year. In my proposal or my explanation of the budget, the executive summary, so to speak, I talk about the challenges that not only we face, but as the mayor can contest from his, his time at the league conference, everyone is facing right now, which is you have state funding, like state share revenue, which has gone flat or gone down over the last five, 10 years. You know that. I've talked about it every year. We have levy limits, which prevents us from raising taxes to compensate for the loss in revenue. But yet, with our additional expenses, which you referred to, older person Phillip, some of our costs are going up well above what we can afford. Example, under levy limits, which is again our operational costs, to stay under levy limits, it means levy limits is the amount of growth, and the mayor talked about this at an earlier meeting. We want to stay within the growth period, which is levy limits. Our growth was 1.6%, I believe. Let me catch up on my notes here. 1.6% growth, net new construction, equates to $130,000 we're able to, to increase in, for operational costs. Now, gasoline is going up 55,000. Now you're down to 80,000, money to spend. Across the board raises, to keep us comparable to our competition, other communities, is 203,000. We're automatically under budget. We're automatically underwater. That also, when we look at other things, is that we've lost money on other things, including from the state. We have additional. We have additional funding that will be going towards some of our other departments because of cost increases. So in the end, we're proposing a budget that pulls $366,000 from our fund balance. Now, that number has gone down, and I gave you an updated sheet on that, and I, let me see if I've got that.
So it's not 457, is that what you're saying, Steve?
Right. It's the total amount is 366, but again, that number has gone down. It's about 280. And I apologize, I don't have that updated sheet in front of you. You may have actually gotten it when we sent it. I mean, I know you kept getting sent different packages, but that number has gone down below 300,000. Now it's like 280. Now, also in your sheets, I showed you that, which is the bottom of this, maybe it's the second sheet that you actually have in your book. We talked about what was our budget, our final budget, versus what was our actual, what was the difference over a 10-year period? Actually, it was an eight-year period. And the average difference was 366,000. Very ironic, but it came out to what we originally planned on pulling from the fund balance. Now, if that's the case, if on average, we're outperforming our budget by $366,000 we're now pulling from, we would actually end up not pulling any money and not adding any money back in. So that is our hope, and that is our plan. Again, our number has reduced from 366 of what we're planning on pulling, down to 288. But again, if everything stays the same as average, hopefully, there's no other surprises. Again, I think we budgeted, and to kind of go into your second question, is we really did budget, you know, some pretty drastic increases in some of our costs. Gasoline was just an example, at $55,000 more in gasoline next year. Hopefully, that number will be overbudgeted and we'll be pleasantly surprised, which I think every family is hoping, so...
So let me just kind of...
Please, go ahead.
Explain my understanding of that. So you're using this general fund balance to balance out the budget, and you're borrowing from it or taking from it from year to year. That's what I'm looking at, that in 2014, it went from 7.3, now we're at 7 mil. That's the back of your executive summary.
Yeah, so...
What are we required to have?
There is no requirement. There is a suggested number, which is 33%, one-third of your year, generally accepted practices of the GPOA.
Which would be?
General policy...
It's like half of what we have.
What's that?
It's like half or less of what we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, your number? Yeah, it's about half of what we have. Right now, we have about a 65%.
Okay, so we're not borrowing to make just general expenses, right? This is something that...
We're not borrowing anything. We're literally, we're putting, we're pulling money from our savings to be able to balance the budget and stay within levy limits. So again, I want to very clearly state how this works. If we stay under levy limits, that means we are staying below the difference in growth, which is what we want. Now, if you do that, and your budget, your tax, is not going up for operational purposes, right? We understand that? So the only other thing that would affect that is the rest of those budgets, so...
If I could, Steve, only because you brought this up, when we were at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, there was a whole section on levy limits and shared revenue. Okay? Shared revenue is one of these things that the legislature, in their brilliance, thought up because they said property taxes are going too high, so we're going to limit what municipalities can do as regards to raising their own taxes. Okay? And I can understand that. I'm not necessarily disagreeing with it. However, this is the ridiculousness of it, which I would encourage everybody to contact their legislators. Believe it or not, so you can only raise it up to this limit, but borrowing is excluded. So borrow what you want. You can bury yourself in debt, and then, of course, now with the higher interest rates is going to hurt you, but that doesn't affect it, and as far as the levy limits, and that just makes my head explode. The shared revenue, if you look, and I'll do it backwards for the cameras, if you look at what's happened over the last 10 years, taxes collected by the state of Wisconsin, it's a line about like this. It's about a 25, 30% angle. But if you look at shared revenue, and this is what Steve's been suffering through in his predecessor, it's flat, 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 flat. So the state is collecting more and more revenue, but the shared revenue isn't. So what I hope to propose, or hope we could get in front of the state legislature, is that fire EMS paramedics is excluded from the levy limit. Our number-one thing is to protect the people. We are crazy if we are going to limit levies, you know, from municipalities and not have that open to a community that wants to go as an example, like we're transitioning from EMS to paramedic. We have to have the ability, if the folks wanted, and I honestly believe they do, of being able to do what we need to do as a community. Now, you're listening to a guy who's not really big on raising taxes, and I think I've proven that since I've been sitting in this chair, but this is one thing where you have to have. I would just as soon swap it, that they take the exclusion for borrowing and get rid of it and supplant it with the fire EMS paramedic, because that, right now, is subject to levy limits, and that, from my point, or from my position, is just plain stupid. And the legislature needs to correct that, so, because I know that's one of our expenses, obviously, that's going up, because paramedics are more expensive than EMS, and you have to have more and more of the paramedics. We were allowed to start with three, but that is a limited thing that the state lets you start with, but then you have to be able to cover it if you're going to have paramedics, 24/7, 365, and you can't do that with three people over time. You have to add more. I think we're in the process of doing that. I don't know if the chief is here to back me up, but you know what I'm saying, because we've had the discussions before. So please understand, when it comes to raising taxes, it's anathema to my being, except when the safety of the people of the city of Hartford is actually involved, and I think this is one of those cases. So I'll be talking with Steve with that on Thursday and see what we can work out, but that's something, again, every person listening to this that's voting age in the state of Wisconsin can contact their legislator and going, hey, with this shared revenue stuff, it's been flat for so many years, and we've been raising more and more taxes. Why don't we remove the levy limits on fire EMS and paramedic? Please, please, please. Believe me, if they start getting emails and their phone starts ringing, this is going to be coming up, something, and I know the League of Wisconsin Municipalities is also looking at that, because this, anyway, I'll get off my soapbox on that.
Well, I was just gonna say...
It was a hot topic, and I think it's...
It was a long answer to a simple question, so I think...
You gotta build a watch when you have to do that.
I think I'm good. So you're using that fund, Steve, if I understand, how much you pull, how much you put in to just be able to make sure that we're maintaining this balance of this, I would say, flat tax kind of mantra that we've given you?
Yeah, it's, again, it keeps us under levy limits, which, again, for the purpose of taxes, keeps us...
Okay, so the levy limits play into how much you're pulling out of this fund as well, to make sure that we don't exceed that?
It unfortunately, well, yes, yes and no. It has majority of why I would pull from the fund balance. But the second part of that is, I have a personal policy, budget policy, is I don't pull out of general, I don't pull out of our current general fund for the payout of payouts. So when I have a retiree, and I urge all of my staff never to retire, but they still don't listen, when I have a payout that's considerable, I don't take that off of what the rest of the staff are going to use for the rest of the year. So that's one of the things we always have, I've always taken out of fund balance. But again, as it was, a lot of these times in which we've planned to take out money out of fund balance, we never had to.
Right.
And actually put money back in.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, Steve.
So that was just my point, is you're using this to balance the budget.
Yeah.
If stuff comes below, we, and at the end of the year, you don't need it all, we don't, we don't pull it out, you don't move it over, right?
Right.
And then, the other part comes down to those, we get in the middle of the year, which we have done, I think we've done that before, we've looked at some expenses that went above and beyond, sometimes we choose to go into the general fund to fund it as well, then.
Yeah, absolutely.
It depends both ways.
And the fund balance, I mean, it's kind of like our third purse right now. The first purse, of course, is your revenues, your taxes, your fines, forfeitures, and fees. But the second, the second one that's become everyone's darling is ARPA money, right? And I'm talking to other administrators, and...
We love ARPA money.
We're talking, you know, how are you affording this? What are you, how in the world can you afford this? There's no way, oh, we're using ARPA money. Awesome. What are you gonna do next year? The year after there, the year after that?
Figure it out.
And so unfortunately, we've used, I mean, not unfortunately, but, you know, we're scheduling to use all of our ARPA money just on capital items that are way over budget. Street projects, park projects, everything else that's coming up. So, yeah, the ARPA, the ARPA is our second purse that's gone away a long time, I mean, it's been gone away for a while now, and so fund balance is our, is our next thing. But to add to the mayor, what the mayor said, now that I have to, but the point is, look at the spring election, there was a huge amount, I mean, an overwhelming amount of public safety referendums, and 70% of them failed. 30% passed, so they went to their constituents and said, would you raise taxes for police and fire? And even those failed, 70% of them failed. And several of them did. Again, it was a huge year, historic year for referendums, and look at what we're doing here in Washington County. We're going to, for a safety, you know, referendum for Washington County, which you heard about through your county executive. So it's, this, it's hitting everybody, and as the mayor heard over and over and over again at the league conference, everyone's dealing with this, and the state needs to do something about how it's changing. And two last things, and I swear, I'll get off my soapbox here now, too, but it's the mayor's fault. He started this. But the truth of matter is, take a look at two levels of government, the state and the county. They both have revenues which are growing dramatically, sales tax and share revenue. The governor said he had $8 billion left over, and the county continues to have huge rising sales tax numbers that they're able to reduce their levy or to buy other things with. We don't have that opportunity. We don't have any growth like that. We don't get any sales tax. You know, for us, there's no, every, all of our revenues are limited, and so it's very, very difficult for local governments. And again, I say that this is what the mayor and I heard over and over again last week in La Crosse, so...
So one last comment. I just wanted to make sure we have enough content for our high school visitors for their report, so I think...
Alder Person Hagy?
Well, one of the things that I heard from the county board chair, not the county board chairman, the county exec, was, well, if you people need more money, then why don't you enact a wheel tax? Oh, boy. So that means every community around the state is going to be at a different taxing rate, and I'd say that's dead on arrival. Other entities, such as the county, have rising sales tax numbers year by year, and they could be sharing some of that as it grows. That's not asking them to raise taxes, but to share some of it of the growth in taxes. Instead, it was suggested, well, we should just enact a new type of tax. Great. But that wouldn't count against the levy limits. That's why that one is possible to do, I understand.
No. No, that definitely go against our levy limits.
Is that right?
Oh, yes.
Well, then, you put it in place and it gets taken away elsewhere.
Yeah, we're stuck either way. It's, again, all of our revenues are capped. And you can't, you can't, if all of our revenues are capped, and we get punished for raising any more revenues, like adding additional tax, and our expenses are going up, you know, I mean, some communities, we're talking right now, are giving raises of 4% and 5% to keep up with their competition next door to them. And I'm just like, good luck affording that next year, and the year after that, and the year after that.
Right, and when it comes to, you know, because the referendums were brought up, the referendums, obviously, on the ballot are referendums to grow certain things, to expand, to do something, and I'm not taking a side either way on that, but ours, when we're talking about what a city needs for its fire and its EMS and its paramedic, this isn't a, gee, we're going to expand, no. This is to provide an absolute necessary service for the people of the city of Hartford. And so I think that there is a demonstrable difference between what they're doing and what we're doing, and ours doesn't have to go to referendum to do what we're doing on this. Obviously, that's why our butts are in these seats, and that is to make the decisions to make sure that the safety of all the citizens is paramount. But I'm still thinking that we can do that within the framework of not raising taxes, so that's, at least that's where I'm coming from. But I still am urging people on this shared revenue item that they need to contact their legislators and get them to put on the, gee, it doesn't count against the levy limit thing, the fire EMS and paramedic needs to be on that side of the levy, with borrowing, which I still think is nuts to exempt that, but, oh, well, it is what is.
So again, tonight, what we are doing is we are approving the levy, not the, not the tax rate. So in case someone says to you, what's the tax rate? We don't know again, until we get our industrial numbers. And so we're approving the levy, which is that 8,513,659.
Because we don't have those numbers, do we have to do that tonight, or can we do that all?
Yeah, I mean, you're just approving the levy no matter what. It's always nice to be able to say what your tax rate is, but you don't approve that anyways. That number comes out, I mean, when it comes out, so to speak, you're just approving the levy as a whole. So that's what, that's the number you're approving, is the 8513659. And the other thing is, is it a timely thing? Yes, we have to go to publication, and then they have to have the appropriate amount of days before we actually vote on it at the public hearing on the 15th of November.
So if, for whatever reason, and we could publish all of that, that could change on the 15th?
At the public hearing, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, while we do have the discussion and consideration of amendments to the draft 2023 City of Hartford operational and utility budgets in order to publish, Steve, you're passing this back to me for the vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And I know for certain that we don't have a first and a second on this. Alder Person Phillip, are you... Okay, we'll go with Phillip and Kohler for...
You'll get half of them, right?
First and second.
Motion by Alder Person Phillip, seconded by Alder Person Kohler, for the draft 2023 City of Hartford operational and utility budgets in order to publish.
Any discussion? President Hagy?
Just to comment that I know an awful lot of effort went into putting this budget together with all the constraints that are on it, and it's maybe less than what we really like it to be, but because of restrictions on what we can do, it's about as good as we can do. I think it's a good budget, but again, there's more personnel we would have liked to have added, and we just can't do it. And going back on shared revenue, I'll make a comment on that as well. There was a time when Hartford received, Hartford received $2 million a year in shared revenue with half the population that we currently have. Now we're at 1 million with double the population, so it's one-fourth as much per person, per capita, as it used to be. So that's another part of the issue. It's not just how much is being sent out, it's where is it being sent out? Certain communities are getting a whole lot more than we are, and it's really an unfair practice. So we send the money to Madison, and they send back a certain percentage of it, and that's part of why we're hurting.
And our needs are not shrinking. So, wonderful. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried for adjournment. Alder Person Webb, Alder Person Phillip.
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Phillip for adjournment at 7:49.
For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. We stand adjourned.